With them every day, so.
Very likely you'll be gone before we have to talk about this.
Okay, okay. Well, some of these things go quite long.
Sometimes.
Okay, speak up. Good, good. It's allowed.
And we're the last, we're the last.
Okay, well, it is six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to the meeting, everybody. Thank you for coming and showing an interest in your community and being an active part in government, local government. So, I always get nervous and forget, but we are supposed to start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, if you would all rise, here's my pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you to everybody who's coming. Let's see, anybody need introductions here? We have some board members here, glad to see you, thank you for coming. All right, minutes, as next up on the agenda, approval of the August twelve twenty twenty five minutes. And I do have a correction, I said, I don't, but I do. Dave Harris was at that meeting, so if you could add that.
Well, he didn't speak, so I was told that if you don't, if a visitor doesn't speak, they don't have to be listened to.
Okay, you know more than I do then. And the other small correction was Gabrielle Urbanavage. You put her name correctly before she records for because, if you could collect that. And to what? The minutes, don't have, her has, her name isn't on there, right? It's Waters.
Waterman?
Yeah.
That's her maiden name.
She signed the.
Oh, she's signed that one.
Or I did. I might have.
Yeah, okay.
Her name is Urban Average, technically.
All right, then I withdraw that, so I will not, any edits or corrections to the minutes then?
Make motion to approve your minutes. With your corrections. I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor, to approve the August twelve twenty twenty five minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carry. Cindy, is there any announcements or correspondence?
Just the letter from Dave and Donna Harris regarding their property.
Okay, we'll get to that. Any other announcements, correspondence, anybody? All right, now it's time for a public comment. This is your time to speak and our time to listen, and the floor is yours.
Don't all stand up at once.
No public comments yet. Omar.
I just see on your business, and it was considered last month, a setback considerations. And I haven't seen any language yet that was requested, but I would just like to give you just a little something to think about. And that is that on setbacks, whether side setbacks or whatever setbacks, why is it that your neighbor has more right to tell you what you can't do on your property than you have to say what you can do on your property? So, because if there's, if there's setbacks, then you can't do a lot of things on that portion of your property. I have a story, a friend of mine just last month was out looking for a house and he actually bought one. But that's one of the things he looked back, looked at, is that he had control over what his setbacks were on his own property. And that was one of his criteria, the house had to be a certain number of feet from the property line for his comfort. So, we each have control over our own setbacks. If we want them, we can do it ourselves. So, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Do you mind if I just introduce myself?
Sure.
Yeah, well, hello everyone, I'm Dr. Mitch Distin, brand new here to Banks Township, just moved here, bought the old Lane Llama Farm. I don't know if you guys all remember that or know that, I was just right when you're going to Antrim Golf Course there. So, yeah, new to the community, wanna get more involved here. A big part of my research for the last three years is how to build more connected communities. So, yeah, any way that I can help out in this community, I've talked to a few local people about what we can do here. And I'm also running right now, I don't know for how much longer, because I hate politics, but at least right now, I'm running as an independent for US Congress in our district. But, yeah, I don't know, I might postpone that to twenty twenty eight, because I don't really have a stomach for politics, as I found out. So, don't know if I'll continue doing that, but, yeah, just wanted to introduce myself. And I do have to go, because all my extended family are at my home right now, so I do have to go be with them. But, yeah, just wanted to introduce myself and, yeah, hopefully meet everybody here. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Be released if you need to come.
Oh, no, I just wanted to stay for a little bit, but, yeah, thank you.
Sure. Super. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Next on our agenda is our standing reports. Zoning Board of Appeals will be meeting September twenty ninth. They had a meeting in earlier plan, but there wasn't a quorum, so they will now be meeting September twenty ninth. Your zoning Board of Appeals are Dave Rasmussen, Tom Richards, Doug Seeny, and Anita Hugusma. So, they'll be meeting and we'll hear more from them. Curtis isn't here yet, so I will wait to hear his report until he shows up. And then next would be Township Board Rep. Richard Fris, Richard, anything? Highlights from last meeting?
Yeah, I have two.
Okay.
We continue to look at some improvements, maintenance of trees and stump removal in Banks Township Park, as well as in cemeteries, nothing finalized there yet. We're looking at soil sampling, and this is kind of related to this potential CSX purchase of the A-Drillway right of way. We're hoping to maybe the state agency Eagle will do this sampling, Katie's working on that. I think there's some additional steps required, and again, they get complicated, so that's up in the air right now, but being worked on. One significant thing that we did agree on and move ahead on was agreeing to split the cost with the village to extend the six mile lake project project. We build the avenue, create it into all of the bridge street. So, that should be happening soon now. Is it being worth fundraising?
No, I'm gonna get some ditch work.
Okay. And then the cemetery policy, we've, we do intend to exercise more of what the cemetery policy allows, calls for, and potentially trying to, there's quite a few plantings and so forth, plantings are the main thing, but there's things in the cemeteries that are, need some attention, and the policy totally covers this, and we have a responsibility to maintain those cemeteries. So, we're gonna be working on that, but we're not rushing to it, so probably nothing happening this year. We're trying to get the word out, and that's why I'm mentioning it here, so that people have that on their radar. And we even like to try to figure out a way to contact people that, who, if there's a possible, that if there's something we wanna grab, we'd very, we'd like to have, know what, we'd like to see down there. And then the new township website is being worked on, we've contracted with GoDaddy, and it's being worked on. I think that's about it.
Thank you. Questions for Richard? Okay, Ruben, planning consultant, come back to any more?
Yeah, certainly. I'll just give an overview of a few items on the planning side of things for this evening. First would be, all of these, we're going to go into more detail on the subsequent agenda items tonight. But first would be the master plan update, so we have, I think, we've sort of reached consensus point on a, an amount to finish out the contract and finish out the process. So, right now, we're at a phase where we have the entire draft master plan, all the content and text and maps together. It just needs to be laid out and formatted, so, to make a really cohesive document. So, it sounds like the Township Board was able to reach a consensus point on costs to work with us to finish that out. And so, with that, our plan would be to bring that to you all for, to take a look at next month as the finalized document. And from there, we'll go through the product review and adoption process. So, more to come on the master plan. Second, I know we have some continued discussion on extraction and sanding gravel ordinances for this evening. So, last month, we all took a look at a draft of the ordinance that the Planning Commission Chairperson here had drafted. So, along with that, we have some other, I pulled together some examples of other ordinances from throughout Michigan to take a look at and could be a point to take a look at what standards other communities are using in their ordinances. And then the existing ordinance adopted is being reviewed by the Township Attorney as well. Next, we have some discussion on setback considerations and just reaching some points of clarity, I think about the scope of the amendments that are being proposed would be sort of the next step there. And, yeah, like I said, I think all of these are separate agenda items that we'll get into next, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. All right, under unfinished business, as Ruben said, we will take a look at the full master, or excuse me, the full, yeah, master plan next month. And I think before we meet again, I will either, I'll have Ruben, I'll talk with you, Ruben, we'll make a plan about how to connect with Catherine Cullen, our attorney, and find out where we're at in her stack. So, we have some reasonable, excuse me, I'm mixing up topics, master plan, we'll look at that. Yeah, we'll look at that next month. And, yeah, with regard to the sanding gravel ordinance, I'll, either I will, you will, you had initially emailed her, explaining to her our scenario, giving her a lot of background, but it would be good to get a status update, where are we at in her stack? And, yeah, well, I'll, I'll connect with you in the, who makes contact with her, so we minimize our lawyer dollars. On that, Ruben has sent us a bunch of, not a bunch, three sanding gravel ordinances. I don't know if you had a chance to look at them?
It was in the packet, we had to click a link in order to review them, and further, it's a quick rundown of each, and correct me if I'm wrong on that. But, there's one from Tyrone Township, Livingston County, one from Nagani, Marquette, and one from White Lake. I have not gone through them in detail, but there are links to each ordinance that you can download and print off the entire ordinance if you so choose.
Yeah, I found it helpful in that it helped, I think even just putting together a draft helped me think through this issue more critically and ask better questions, reading through each of these ordinances, which are, I found, each of them were very readable. And it will help you ask better questions too, and be more discerning. There's, once you do, once you go through that, it won't take a lot of time, but once you go through that, for example, like, you can see where there's potential, or you, I only know one side of the story, but you can see where there's potential for overreach. For instance, one of the, one of the highlights from one of the three had a stipulation that, I'll just speak specifically about what I know, had, had a example of, like, their trucking, had to have, it couldn't be, they had to be bonded, it couldn't be, they had to obey the law, they had to not be overweight and obey the speed limit. That seemed to me redundant, there's always, the Michigan Department of Transportation already monitors that, and putting that in there seemed, as I said, an overreaching. I'll just say, if you work for a house and you're overweight and get a, you know, you go too fast, you're gonna get a very expensive speeding ticket.
Or the officer threatens to call your boss and tell him to drive like an idiot, that's happened.
Yes, so there's built-in mechanisms already. The insurance company might not insure you if you're a reckless driver, and so that, like, just seeing that one thing. The other, the one in Nagani Township, for instance, said that you, they had to have access to Class A roads. Well, as Doug Needham pointed out from the Michigan Aggregate Association, a glacier doesn't pick, look at a map and decide where it wants to deposit its resources. And I thought that was convenient for Nagani Township to say that, because really, everything from Champion all the way to Marquette on forty-one, there's miles and miles of Class A road. So, it, it seemed like they have that ability, so it just seemed. So, all that to say, once you read through them, you can start picking apart and asking better questions, so I would encourage you to do that. Ruben had, and I discussed this, in that we may get draft back from Catherine, and she may suggest that we just redline the current ordinance that's already been adopted, and we may not need to go through this exercise of reviewing our own. We'll, we'll take our lawyer's advice, that's what we paid her, you know, we, we paid her to review these documents. So, I'm not aware that we typically go against the lawyer's advice. You know, it is our decision, but, yeah. So, I would encourage you to read through those, click on the links, if you're, if you're not able, I'll resend that, David. If you, if you'd like that, I think it's helpful to read through them, and they are readable, and they don't have a lot of legal ease. I don't, I think they were, made sense, some of them had like, one of them had a well monitoring stipulation in place. You know, when they dig, dig down through, get to groundwater, there was some kind of criteria to monitor surrounding wells. And I thought, well, that would make really good sense for us to perhaps consider. Anything else you wanna say about that, Ruben?
Yeah, certainly, that's all very good overview. I think, yeah, what I might propose is that if you all would like to take some more time with the ordinances and take a, take a look at those, see what, see what to you makes sense, like what aspects of those you, you like, what questions you have over the next couple of months, then that might be a good suggestion. I think one of the overarching kind of themes to these ordinances is they do have some relatively detailed standards in there that an applicant would have to meet for approval, certainly the well monitoring plan that Patty mentioned. And as well, some of them require fairly extensive documentation of the need and the quantity of resources that exist on a given site prior to approval. There's some that have fairly detailed operational standards regarding how an applicant would lay out potential for their truck route for, you know, shipment and delivery. There's some operational standards for equipment from setbacks, hours of operation. There's requirements in, I think it is White Lake Township's for a reclamation plan that has, there is some substantial detail. So, while all of those ordinances, like Turpers and Howes mentioned, are much lighter in terms of sort of the language itself and the legal ease and everything, there are some fairly detailed and rigorous standards that an application would have to meet. So, for this month, I think I just wanted to put all those in front of you all and sort of start getting your thoughts on that. And just the simple point that there are fairly detailed standards that I think would be good along with reducing the legalese and sort of making the ordinance more readable. That I think might be a good goal to adhere to. So, I think if it sounds good to you all, invite any of you.
I'll just stand around here, I guess that was my one at the last meeting, I think we kind of asked you to come up with a policy that more fit ours. And I guess this is, this is what I was thinking was gonna happen, basically, you've just got policies that are places you already have. You know, that are, you know, that's something, I mean, that's, I wrote policies for shared apartments. That's what I, that's what anybody can do, is probably get into basic policies. I guess I was looking at, what we asked for is, is to come up with something that implements a little bit more of what we're looking for, a little bit more legal, we take care of the environment, natural resources are covered, but also gives property owners a little bit more leeway than I have jumped through hoops, and again, make it a little bit more easy to navigate. I guess that's what I was thinking we're gonna see, not just, well, here's a bunch from other, other places. I guess that's, that's not what I was expecting to see in the pack, and so.
Yep. If it sounds good to you all, I think next month, these are good, these are examples. I think next month, we will be looking for feedback from the attorney, or within the next couple of months. I think that would be important to, to consider in the scope of, you know, the direction that you all do take with this, is to hear Catherine's feedback on this too, and then to consider that with what we have here tonight, and then make a decision on how to move forward.
Okay.
And so, we would, we would be glad to draft new ordinance that would sort of meet those goals. But I think still, there's, there's a sort of component of information that might be missing, which is the feedback on this.
Right. Anything else on that? I just, I was remind, reminded on, looking through the reclamation plan of one of them, the story that Ken told, our previous planning consultant told us about Mackinac Township, you know how they had the windmills up there? And then they took the windmills down, and then Township was on the hook for the cement pads, because they didn't have a strong enough reclamation language in there. So, that's, it is helpful to read through them, it really is, to see what kind of safeguards we wanna have in place for Banks Township while allowing, while encouraging that. And the other thing I just wanted, last thing I wanna say about this, I'm open to hearing more discussion, but I, I was mindful, on our last application, which Marv had submitted, that I'm then withdrawn, I did do a site visit. And so, I was trying to think really bigger than, if you, when you open the door, there'll be more applications. And so, one of them had like a five hundred foot setback from the site, and it's, those details are important. Looking at a topographical map of the plan is very different from doing a site visit. So, you know, when you think, I had to think, I think bigger, like what other, who else would be submitting plans? And you wanna make sure you have those safeguards in place. I do wanna assure new members, and I'm a new member myself, but when it comes time, our job is just to really review the thoroughness of the application, and there is a checklist, a criteria that we have to look through, site visit being one of them. But we just have to look through the application and make sure that the application is complete and thorough, and then we pass that on to the Township Board, and they make the ultimate decision, just reminder, so. Anything else on that for now? Okay, setbacks. All right, to, in order to move forward with this one, I, I'll start out by saying a couple things, two things. One is, I looked in the twenty nineteen master plan, and in the back, they have proposed zoning changes, there's nine things they really want a future planning commission to look at. One of them was setbacks, so some of them have been tackled, one of them is setbacks. And they said, the Township has had some discussion on whether or not a fifty foot setback is appropriate along US thirty-one as required in section four nineteen. Requiring a deeper setback could make some lots less usable and also reduce the connection with the public streetscape. So, you're all wondering, what does section four nineteen say? And I'm sorry, this wasn't in your packet, but you do have, I asked Julie make us a copy of four nineteen. And it really talks about the thirty-one corridor. It, it put this extra stipulation on the, on this thirty-one corridor in Banks Township, requiring, requiring this additional fifty feet that the whole, the property owner no longer has use of because of this. And so, that's section four nineteen. But going back to our minutes, I wanna read from our minutes, just to reset the, reset the discussion. Okay, so we talked about setbacks. There was a Board of One decision by the Board, and I didn't have this feeling that there was a strong sentiment to remove setbacks, it was just to amend them. Discussion to eliminate tradition, additional township setbacks over and above what the road wide away, road right of way requires on road frontage only. Any change needs to be mindful of safety in the overall master plan. So, there was discuss, our discussion really centered around exceeding road, road white, road right of way. And then we talked about the procedure on how to do that, it's requires drafting a new ordinance and having a public hearing and so forth, so. Help me out here, is there more that we need to talk about, other than the additional fifty feet of frontage for Banks Township? Is there more that you have in mind in terms of amending setbacks? I should.
I can, I can jump in too, if you can. Yeah, I, I provided a memo, we did a little bit of kind of consideration at this point over the past couple of months, and thought we, just wanted to take it back with the commission here this evening. As we understand, that really the goal of this sort of motion was to enable property owners to do, to do more with their property and just more kind of ability to place buildings and uses on their given lots, as they kind of see fit for themselves and as appropriate. And we certainly think that that's a good goal and like consistent with the master plan. If I can back up real quick, the setback, the front setbacks, which is really what we're discussing here.
Right.
I think would be measured from the public right of way. So, in Antrim County, I believe it's a sixty-six foot right of way.
Correct.
That includes everything within the road, so that would be everything that would be paved, and then a certain amount of feet more in, on either side of the pavement from the, yeah. Yeah, thirty-three from, from the center, baseline at each, yeah, of any county road, that's right. And so, the right, the setback that the Township required will be on top, in addition to the, the county road right of way.
Right.
And so, our, in our experience, having front setbacks, like the Township currently does in kind of rural residential districts and residential districts, so like agricultural, low-density residential R-one, conservation, resident, residential districts, the CR district, somewhere between twenty-five to thirty-five feet, are, they're very common, and they're in place for certain reasons, often due to, there can be road maintenance and snow plowing concerns, there can be kind of traffic safety issues with having buildings in a setback from, say, a fifty-five mile an hour road, a certain distance. Often, there's some kind of like aesthetic or kind of look and feel that the community wants to achieve through that. So, really setbacks have been in the zoning ordinance for really a very long time, since I believe Banks Township. really a very long time since I believe Banks Township adopted a zoning ordinance. And so the township has been developed under those regulations for a long time. Our read is that the, the master plan that, uh, the township has adopted now really recommends that, uh, the established look and feel be sort of continued forward. So our, our read of that is that, uh, certainly in rural districts, having some setback from the road right of way, there is definitely some reason to do that and to, uh, kind of keep that in there. Now allowing some kind of flexibility for property owners to, um, have some leeway there and, um, uh, kind of, um, some, some flexibility in those regulations could be a good goal to explore. So we wanted to see what you all thought of that. Um, some zoning ordinances have, uh, provision in there to allow the zoning administrator to grant like a very administrative adjustment, uh, where there's a particular hardship where, say, um, you know, there's a setback, someone wants to construct a, an addition and they're within five feet of needing the setback or within ten feet and, um, the township just grants the zoning administrator ability to maybe, uh, grant a five or ten foot setback without having to go to the zoning board of appeals in that kind of situation where, uh, kind of minor administrative adjustments like that. Um, there's other kind of areas that, um, other ways of granting some kind of flexibility in there that I think we could explore. Uh, I think like, uh, Churchillson Howes mentioned, um, the plan does recommend potentially reducing uh, setbacks in targeted districts like the Village of Atwood, um, where there's a or along US one thirty one. It certainly does recommend that.
Well, that's already covered though. Isn't that correct, um, thirty one?
Thirty one.
Thirty one.
Thirty, thirty one.
That's a state.
Well, yeah, but the, the setback, the right of way is much wider there. It's already seventy five feet from the center line. And we still have additional on top of that. So I think that'd be an excellent example of one that probably is excessive to have additional setbacks required beyond. But then on the other hand, and I'm the one that made motion, um, I just, it does seem to, uh, it varies with roads for sure. It seems odd that the county right of way is the same on all county roads. Every little side road like our road that we live on, Doctor Road, is the same as C forty eight. And there's no comparison between the traffic, speed and volume on those two roads. So I do see thirty five foot setback, um, at the right of way, or thirty three feet is pretty close to C forty eight to be building something because you barely can back a vehicle out of a garage, for example, and be on the road. So it really would block visibility with the amount of traffic and the speed at which traffic moves on there. So, but I think it's even more complex if we start picking and choosing different roads.
Well, I, I guess that's what I took it as.
Maybe we could call primary roads one thing and you'd have to delegate.
Well, I, I thought we voted last one to, that we wanted to remove the setback and request that they write a new ordinance with wordage for that.
Front setback.
Front setback, yeah, yeah, front setback was what was voted on. And for a new zoning, you know, proposal to be provided to the board for that, and that's, we got your opinion, but that's not what the board voted on and asked for. If we ask for, uh, ordinance amendment, that'd be written to provide to the board to reflect that what got voted on.
I also think it's worth having a little bit more discussion as opposed to a quick five minute vote and then asking for someone to go through it. Maybe we need to be presented with all the options, have a discussion on it, listen to what the community says and then provide something moving forward as opposed to say, hey, let's rewrite the zoning ordinance if we like it and we can go through. I think especially in this consideration, it's worth a little bit more conversation than maybe just one and or two meetings. That's my opinion on it because the more I, the more.
Finish it though.
More you look at it, the more you see it, the more we're understanding how complex this is as you get. We don't have to go road by road and go through it that way, or we'd have to start doing targeted areas, which is another option or give relief as what, as what Ruben said, and we need to collectively have that conversation. Road by road seems like the easiest option, but then how far down the rabbit hole do we go? Um, you know, what, what point are we going to, you know, how far are we gonna take this and how do we simplify it in some capacity?
I guess I look at, you know, we've already had three instances where people, you know, are, you know, a little on Lake Shore couldn't do it because you're in a setback. Well, every, every house is in a setback, so nobody can do anything in a house. Essex Road, you know, my house is in this setback. I know, damn, Kate's old one is the farm, so you're, you're, you know, without giving some relief to these people, you're basically saying, you're in a setback, so what you, you better be happy with what you got. And I can see new builds or something, but limiting somebody that's got a house that's lived there for fifty years, saying, well, you're on this extended setback, now you get what you get.
Well, you're, you're, you're saying, because you're in the setback, you're in a non-conforming. That's what you're saying, right? So that affects any changes you wanted to make on the structure.
Correct.
It was non-conforming. So understand, what, probably one, I was thinking about this. One of the first things you're gonna affect, if you dump front setbacks or you change them, you're gonna, well, maybe you want this. Maybe the people in township want it. There's gonna be a whole lot less non-conforming structures.
As in?
As in.
Example.
As in, we'll take the one that was, that kind of brought this whole thing up on Aquabird.
Anything that's currently non-conforming would go.
Cause there's no more, it's no, the whole home is no longer non-conforming. Everything that, if you go back to, to zero, go to the right of way, setbacks, every, pretty much most of these structures in the township that are currently non-conforming are no longer just not, not conforming. So maybe you want that. You know, maybe you wanna give the people the freedom to say, okay, you're not, huh, freedom at last, you know? I can do, I can do what I want. And, uh, because the township is no longer governing me this way or they no longer, they, they've removed that obstacle. You know, uh, and again, if you wanna do that, that's fine, but just remember that's gonna affect a whole lot of, a lot of structures that are non-conforming. That when these, when these setbacks were put in, it was realized that, okay, that's gonna make, with these numbers, it's gonna make a whole bunch of people non-conforming. And the reason we want that is so that eventually you get rid of the non-conformers. That's the whole purpose for non-conforming, right? Is that eventually they're gonna go away because you don't wanna keep promoting it. Um, there's, you're saying as a township, well, we don't like that that structure is that close to, to the road based on the setback, whatever arbitrary setback you make. Um, and so by removing that, you're not stepping back away from that and saying, okay, we no longer feel that way. That's a pretty major change in, in how you're looking at, um, how you're looking at your zoning. Again, I'm not advocating either way. I'm just saying, these, these are some things to consider, so. Also, you referred to four nineteen, that, that about the corridor, about thirty one corridor?
Yeah.
Having a fifty foot setback, fifty foot setback, right?
Additional, mhm.
Okay, really, anything that's already R one along that corridor, corridor already has a fifty foot. Okay? The only one that really affects is Village, which is twenty feet, right? Village is twenty feet from setback. So what you're saying is anything in the Village, if you're on thirty one, Dave, don't you have the structure right there in Atwood, right? You're tied to it.
That's supposed to tie to it.
Right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm as close as even that.
Yeah, you know, you're, you're right there. You're right there. So that's, that's not conforming. According to the, that four nineteen, you need to be fifty feet back. Well, you're not. You're non-conforming, okay? I don't see that of changing, but you go down the, go down the highway a ways and anything that's ag along thirty one, instead of having a fifty, thirty five foot setback, cause that's the front, it's gotta be fifty. According to four nineteen. That's like an addendum, right?
Right, yeah.
So, so, it's an addendum to this. It doesn't refer to it in the chart as maybe it should. It'll say, hey, remember, you're on, you're on thirty one. You gotta, you gotta be fifty feet. So, I don't know if you, you end up looking at that at the same time, four nineteen, maybe that goes away. I don't know why those things are put in on that, but I didn't, well, I don't, they're there.
Yeah, I think with that, maybe one option could be to look at specific setbacks, kind of like, uh, the zoning administrator was mentioning here, um, like if there's that setback on, um, US thirty one and, you know, um, you mentioned earlier, like the lakefront residential districts, the conservation residential district, which is, I believe, most of the lakefront lots in Banks Township, it requires twenty feet on the sides, thirty five feet in the rear and fifty feet on the front. On those lots that are kind of long and narrow like that, it is a lot of space. So I think there could be room to kind of reduce those down.
But on those narrow lots, lots of record, less than a hundred fifty feet, there are only ten foot sides of that.
Okay, so on the ten foot on those lots of record.
So that's dangerous.
Okay. So in, but in some of those situations, I think there are quite large setbacks. Um, now like eliminating them wholesale from the ordinance and requiring no setback would be, that's sort of a different issue than kind of reducing those to allow more, less of those situations. This is kind of what we wanted to, uh, add tonight.
And I would add, if you're gonna, you know, think about this too, if you're gonna, um, basically eliminate your front setbacks in order to make it easier for people to use their property, more of their property, why do we have side setbacks? Why are there side setbacks? Is it so you're not a bother to your neighbor? We already have a fence that can go right on the line. If you have a fence, you wanna put it up between your neighbors, you can put it right on the line, six foot high. That's, that's perfectly allowed. So what's the difference if you have a fence there or you have the back of a building right on, on the line? It's a viper. So, think about that too. Why don't necessarily have to discriminate against us the front setbacks? Maybe you need to look at people that are maybe, uh, could benefit from using more of their sides. Be careful what you're getting into, I mean.
Well, I know there's been allowances for, you know, the, the rear setback on O'Barras, for example, they gave him a, he got one hour. He was allowed to build his barn behind his place and it was bunted up to our property, so there's a lot of them do that. Um, I don't know what exception he got for that. But I would say what the side is, cause if I put my pole barn right next to your fence and all the snow off my pole barn is going over your fence into your yard, that could create an issue. That's why you have side setbacks.
What's that?
Got your roof going out of line.
Depends on how much I like it.
What would you like to do guys?
Well, I agree with Tyler, but I think, uh, we're at a spot where it requires further discussion and consideration. So.
Eliminating doesn't make any sense to me. No, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly against eliminating completely. Um, out of, for me, and I'll speak and whatever you think of this, it is what it is. I'm more inclined to look at the lakefront lots, especially down in that corridor where there's not high traffic areas and whatnot. That's to me is a more attractive option. We're, we're not going down nearly as much into changing the overall look of the entire township, more so just one particular small area. And if we find that there are more of those districts throughout the township, I think that that could be something that we have a conversation on. But to go through and try to do it by road or try to do it by the, the, that way, I just, I, I think we're, when do you stop? Um, and at some point, I think it also begs the question, if you do have non-conforming, are there avenues for particular homeowners to be able to go down and is that something that we explore? While minimizing the amount of impacts we do on setbacks here, is there avenues for homeowners in the future to at least be able to explore? And if there's not, what could that look like in the future? Not necessarily, just no. Um, you have to, no different than if you wanna have your taxes reduced, you have to show up to the tax tribune, tribune, bring information that proves what you're trying to say is, is actually correct and right. And you have to do the legwork to do such. If we don't have an avenue, avenue for homeowners to do that, is that something that we explore? I, I don't know, but for me, I think tailoring the standards to more of a geographic location while being able to look at where it's at, what kind of traffic there is and what particular lots that we're looking at is a much more realistic standard for the planning commission to try to take on.
So you're like with the Lake Shore Drive or the, the new deck is like, hey, this is what I wanna do. It's not affecting anything. It's not, and given that, cause like it was just against, there's no, there's no wiggle room to prove it because it was but putting something, implementing that there's, you know, we can, it can be approved on a case by case.
Okay, well, okay, good. Are you gonna give that as suggested or one option? You're gonna give the zoning administrator, me or whoever, the next one, the next three after me, um, are gonna, you're gonna give them the, some leeway to, to do those? If I, would you have given, if I had that leeway on the, uh, on the Atwood Road, uh, deck, you know, I could have probably just waved my wand and said, you know what, I'm gonna make a note of it. I think it's okay. Uh, you're close enough. Okay? And then I could make a note of that. That's close enough. That's good. It's approved. And then now, now I or whoever is me is sitting in that box of, of saying, when the next one comes along and maybe just, just a little bit more than the last one was, and then you say, yeah, that's close enough to. You can see the, you can see the prummetery that you get shoved into. After a while, after a while, what do you got? Well, no, you know what? Now you're within twenty five feet of what was a thirty five foot setback. That's too much. I can't go more than ten feet. Maybe that's what you do. Maybe, maybe that's the limit that you put on a zoning administrator and say, you know what, I can do leeway. I can do this much. Can you modify your, can you modify your drawing, you know? Instead of bringing this thing out twelve feet, can you bring it out ten feet? You know, maybe that would work. Maybe that would work.
I think it's worth the discussion and I certainly, for me, I don't think it should either. If you are gonna give it to one individual, that individual has a cap or you bring it to a, some sort of multi, multi-individual.
You still got a zoning board of appeals.
That was where my mind was going.
That's there. I mean, that's what, that's what we've, we've run into. That's what, uh, uh, Mr. Lilly ran into and had to go through that process and it, you know, because of how it's written and what, what the steps have to be followed, it, it, it went down. Now in his case, would that have been within? I don't know. I don't know the numbers exactly if that would have fallen between, within five or ten feet of, of what you gave the zoning administrator allowance for.
Um. I think ten would have fixed that from.
Either way, it's, what's done is done. I'm just thinking going forward.
Well, I, I guess I look at it like, you know, Van McCade's house, you know, Bud's house, when, you know, so if something happens, you know, the Centennial Farm can't be replaced or fixed or anything because it's in the setback?
That would be, that would be, that would be an allowance. It may have to go to a ZVA appeal, but the structure was there. You may not be able to build it bigger.
Right.
Would you want it closer to the road?
Well, what I'm saying is, but, you know, we're having.
You're not building a new, that was out of your, if it burned down, that's out of your power. If you wanna burn it down yourself, now you brought that on yourself and that's what the ZVA is gonna say, well, you brought the problem on. That's why.
And because we have these setbacks, it's still not, it's still gonna be non-conforming unless you change those setbacks. You say, well, it was, maybe it was a, uh, thirty five before and now you've changed it to be twenty. Well, now maybe it's not an issue at all and that individual can, can go ahead because the rule changed. I don't mean to sound combative, if I do, I'm really sorry. I just, just, I'm a passionate, I'm a passionate guy. Let's say this, I'm not combative.
No, no, I don't, I'm not here yet. Um, Ruben, question, is it, uh, is there standard practice to give the, um, zo, the zoning administrator leeway? Like to say you can have five feet, ten feet. Is that a practice? Am I hearing that?
Some communities do take that. It's sometimes called like an administrative exception or something. So like was mentioned here, um, there is a zoning board of appeals. So if there's a, uh, to add on to a non-conforming structure or for a variance from a standard like a setback currently, the process. the process in many township would be to get, go to the zoning board of appeals for, uh, an exception, or a, a variance. And to do that, you'd have to prove hardship, but some communities do, uh, do, or enable the zoning administrator to grant like a, an administrative exception, and they'll put a cap on it, maybe up to, you know, up to five feet, or up to, uh, twenty percent of, uh, what is normally required, or certain constraints like that, and say otherwise, if it's more than that, you need to go to the zoning board of appeals for the variance. But, um, within that, um, they, they allow, you know, um, staff to basically grant an exception like that. So that's something that is an, an option, because you all think that would be appropriate.
Which is fine, so long as you give your zoning administrator cover. When the second neighbor doesn't get what they want, it's gonna have a little bit more. 'Cause that's, that's what you're opening him up, him or her up to.
Well, consistency is key.
Selective enforcement of zones, what the court will say.
Yeah.
And within certain maximums, like there's a maximum exception, uh, to even, uh, regulation in the zoning ordinance that the zoning administrators could, uh, grant approval for, otherwise I would have to go to the zoning board of appeals. So I could draft an amendment like that to, uh, if you all think it's appropriate.
What do you guys think? Is that something?
To give the administrator a percentage or a call over?
Yeah, based on mass, you know, there's gotta be some formula, like you said, twenty percent of the, um, bulk, I guess it's called. Whatever that is, whatever state law it is, and then allow you to, yeah. Well, I, Curtis, Curtis, how you.
Well, I see, well, here, that, then you're gonna put, you know, to me is, if you can come up, I think you said twenty feet in addition, this is fifty feet now. 'Cause here's probably gonna have that.
Fifty feet only on thirty-one, only on thirty-one.
No, no, what we talked about last time is, I think David, you propose a twenty feet in addition to the county setback, correct?
I mean, no proposal other than.
No, you're just.
Is your, no setback didn't make sense, I mean, um.
Did you say the village?
Two twenties, twenties in the village, twenties in, uh, mobile homes. Thirty-five's an ag.
'Cause here, you know, here, you're gonna have Curtis running here and there, everywhere and every thing, you're gonna have zoning board of appeals.
Busy?
Busy, and.
I mean, I would say, you're gonna.
Okay, scrap that idea, scrap that idea.
Well, I think if you're gonna give the zoning administrator some leeway to say whether it's a fixed number of five, ten feet or a percentage, fixed number would be nicer.
Yeah, that's, that's.
If you're gonna do that, you need to do that, you need to decide if you're gonna do that in conjunction with shrinking your stated front setbacks. If the front's the only one you're concerned about. You know, are you gonna go from thirty-five an ag down to twenty-five, to twenty? Are you gonna go from an R-one and CR down from fifty to thirty? Are you, are you gonna change those numbers? And give the zoning administrator a little extra leeway? Just, you got, there's, there's two baskets here you're, you're working with, so.
Yes, you're right, you're right.
Figure that out too.
Initially, we were talking about how Ruben specified, like the bowling alley, the lakefront property, those lawn near, to allow those people to have more.
Well, they're split with their, they're split with their road too, so they're unique properties, they're, the, the property themselves, if their road wasn't where it was at, maybe might, you know.
But remember, you also said that when it comes to CR, you weren't talking about the lakeside. You're, you're keeping that fifty intact.
Well, it has to be because of the green belt ordinance regardless, correct?
Yeah, I mean, this is.
Yeah, but we moved to the lake, and the front becomes.
Right, but that's on a lake.
It's on the lake, there, so that's a, that has to.
The road.
The green belt ordinance states fifty from the lake regardless, so whether that you wanna consider that your front or your back, then I think.
It is considered, no, it is considered front, it's in, that's what's written, in the ordinance, so.
Okay. Well, then maybe that deserves a little bit tweaking, so it can't get missed from street, because it, you would be the only township in northern Michigan that wouldn't require you to be a minimum of fifty feet away. Um, and I think that we're all in agreement with that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you need to keep that intact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're talking about lakefront ones, now you're talking about a rear setback, 'cause that's what the roadside is.
It's a matter of.
Okay.
So if Lilly didn't have any, any rear setback, if the rear setback was zero, he could've built up to the road right away. Because, again, he's got two rears. He's got the rear at the road, he's got the rear at the back that's proper, unfortunately, because of the road going through.
Do you, do you have last month's minutes to where it would show the wording of my motion that we passed? 'Cause I can't seem to find it now, and I don't.
Item number seven.
Hmm, that's on the, grab one.
Song's.
Eight, eight.
Eight? Oh, yeah, there we go. Okay. Okay, so, that's, that's what I was thinking. We, my, my motion last month was, I, I withdrew the previous motion that said get rid of the front setbacks, and we did ask, I made motion Travis supported it, we asked Beck and Grager to start the process to amend the ordinance to eliminate setbacks that exceed all road rights of way setbacks that passed. So, and it was specifically about road rights of way, so then this lakefront being front or rear wasn't a factor, because we were only talking about setbacks that were in excess of road rights of way. But we did say, what we actually passed was for them to start the process, and so I think probably in fairness to Ruben, I think he's done that. We didn't eliminate the setbacks last month, so that process is ongoing.
Probably Lake Shore, that, that in the back. That needs to be adjusted differently if we're gonna adjust that.
Well, we wouldn't have to touch the backs, I mean, if we're only wanting to.
Well, when a lake's the lake's the problem.
No, we did, it's not called front. The, the discussion was to eliminate setbacks that are in excess of the road right of way. It could be front or rear, whatever it is, road right of way, not front or rear. But I do see, like I said already, uh, I guess, I, I don't, I'm not that excited about eliminating entirely, even on the road rights of way, because I think some of the roads are too busy and, uh, too fast of traffic to have structures that close to the road. I think it's a safety issue, so, uh, it does get complex, but I'd be willing to keep talking about it from now on. Wholesale, do we remain there?
No, okay.
As far as. So.
All right, do we wanna ask Ruben then to, um, draft and, or, or draft some language for us to look at regarding front setbacks that are, yeah, specifically front setbacks that exceed road right of way and leave the rest alone? Does that sound, what, like you'd like, do we tackle all of, everything that is a main concern?
Well, I'd say we're gonna draft, I mean, let me pick a number.
All right.
What do we ask?
Well, we have, like I said, the, the, it's, the corridor on fifty-one, on, excuse me, on thirty-one is an, an extra fifty-foot setback. You wanna, is that?
Where does that apply?
What's that?
Where does that apply on thirty-one? In our township, that extra fifty foot? They're applying a village for anything new? Is that what it is? Gotta be, right? So anybody built on thirty-one has gotta abide that, by that. Any, any new, any structure, right, any new facility, or?
As I read it.
Okay.
Four nineteen, yeah.
So, okay, mm, okay.
Okay, it says, it says building setback requirements, development of highway corridor property regardless of zoning district shall have a minimum front yard setback of fifty feet.
Okay. So anything that happens in the village, anything new that might come along, it's gotta be at least fifty feet back from the road right of way.
So then this table doesn't, isn't accurate. I mean, that fifty feet supersedes.
That trumps the table on thirty-one. It doesn't, if, it doesn't on Byers Road, which is in the village, right? As you go, as you go, uh, east, that, then, that fifty, extra, extra fifty feet doesn't apply, then you're down to the village at twenty, and then thirty-five when you hit ag. But, but on the corner, if one of those businesses changes hands and wants to put something on new, even if there's an existing building there, anything new's gotta be abided by that, by that fifty feet, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'll just need to keep that in mind. 'Cause I don't think the fire, I don't think the fire hall abides, uh, I don't think that the fire, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
The fire barn.
Right.
Didn't, that didn't apply to the fire barn. So that gets back to some, what we've talked about before, that you end up with some properties that in some ways become unbuildable.
Yeah, that's.
Especially on a half acre, which we have for a minimum size and say ag.
Yeah, that's a good example of, uh, it's not just, we have property out there, but that, that just seems excessive.
But it also seems reasonable to have an exception.
Fifty feet on top of seventy-five, that's a hundred and twenty-five feet from the center line, that's just, I don't know why. I mean, that's, that's just unnecessary.
Just trying to, just trying to make, put an example out there to visualize.
And this was, uh, I. So.
Right, so.
Does twenty make everybody happy?
I don't, I think when you start doing that, Travis, I think the, um, it's just too, it's too complicated to put one blanket number like that. I, I would propose that we just eliminate the extra fifty on US thirty-one that exceeds road right of way.
So now we're doing anger on twenty with the remaining, depending on where it is, the zoning district is, will range from thirty-five to twenty.
Forty-four fifty, yeah. R-one's already fifty, so that addendum at four nineteen doesn't even apply to it. So R-one up by, up by, um, Lord Road, that last little bit there, um, and, and Lord, the highway part is by Lord Road there, that's already fifty feet setback from the highway.
It would only change when you got to the village, would it? Or any adder?
Well, the ag property along the highway, it's, it's fifteen, and it's got thirty-five.
Oh, yeah.
And then as you get south of the village, you're ag, that's all ag going down the highway there. That is no, I mean, that isn't thirty-five feet, but that goes to fifty. Which is fine, still don't know that. But the village is, is definitely different. And let's face it, most of, most of the stuff in the village, at least from Frisky South, is established. There's, you know, the stuff is there. The old commercial buildings and such. There isn't a whole lot to change there, but, but like I said, if, if somebody, you know, I, I wish I could say that. If other changes happen at some of those other properties, then any of those changes have to maintain that, that fifty feet back, so long as you have that four nineteen in effect, which is.
What's just advised, pull the by and east side of the road?
Just by on the other side of the road?
'Cause it's split.
Yeah.
There's, I mean, the majority of that corridor is, is village and residential on the west side. Probably, what'd you say, how many? Seventy percent of it?
Yeah, yeah.
The other side is.
Seventy percent of it is ag.
Which is, uh, thirty-five, just depending on what side of the street you're on.
The village zone is the same.
The village is large.
The village zone.
This is village mixed, yeah, on both sides.
On both sides, with the exception being the very north edge and then the village.
Right.
Yeah. I think if we change anything, the only corridor it would be applied to is thirty-one at this very moment.
Setback wise, you mean?
Yeah, front setback.
So that's not gonna fix our situation on Etwood Road?
No, it's not. There's a whole reason that we have our Lake Shore and Etwood Roads, right now what we're talking about is, is something that isn't even an issue at the moment. So that kind of puts you at tailored standards for lakefronts, and/or giving the zoning administrator the ability to have some flexibility on what the current setbacks are.
So what's the number we're gonna put with given the way for the setback?
But again, that means that we're gonna have to, we, we get geographically, correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe I'm totally not thinking through this correctly, wouldn't we need to designate areas that would be considered the area to be able to change as doing a blank, 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 wow, an entire change of everything there? Am I making sense there?
Can you say that again?
Targeting certain areas as opposed to doing a blanket change of the entire setback that we currently have.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna give the zoning administrator that option to, to, you know, be reasonable within his number, that, you know, let's say, uh, let's just use this case, uh, of the deck, you know, it's already built, it's already there. If it's only a couple of feet difference, and you're giving the zoning administrator the, the ability to say, you know what, in this case, given the circumstances, I'm gonna say, okay, if you're gonna give me that, then that'll take care of it. You can't, can't stop doing it. You can't tell me that I can only put there, but I can't do it for the guy on, on some deck road that, who's technically, in, in a case like that, maybe in a place that doesn't affect anybody else, like Richard's kinda saying, on a side road, but you have the number of studies, too close. You know, you can't tell me, you just don't tell me I can't do it there, if I, if I can do it here. You gotta give, you gotta have enough trust in the judgment of your zoning administrator, I think, to, to do that, to give a, a blank approval within, within those parameters.
No way, you'll never find another zoning administrator.
That's what I say, if you have, if you have the initial or the end, but you have, there's wiggle room, there's that, you know, set number, which kind of covers you while you're past the set number that was given grace to work with.
Someone who likes his decision takes it to court.
Yeah, you can't let, you, you can't let the zoning administrator say, you know what, go ahead, that, nobody's gonna be bothered by your building that close. Nah, that's a lot closer than anybody else, but in this case, not a problem. You can't do that. You gotta have some, there's gotta be some structure there. There's gotta be something that can be applied to everybody else, because sooner or later, you're gonna have somebody come along, and some, whether it's a zoning administrator or somebody else in a different position in government, that's gonna take advantage of, of his ability, maybe not Bangs Township, maybe somewhere different state. They're, that are gonna take advantage of their position to, you know, have favoritism, you know? And we don't, you don't want that, you know, you want the, 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 uh, the, the idea, the, the, you know. Appearance, same.
Yeah. Okay, well, I am uncertain how to move forward, so I would just propose we table this, I'll give it, I'll think about this some more. Um, Ruben, do you have any suggestions in terms of how to move forward on this, or thoughts?
Yeah, it, it feels like there's, there's definitely some, uh, different options that have been kind of mentioned tonight. There's the idea of reducing setbacks in, um, certain areas of the township, whether that's the village area, you know, saying the, uh, fifty foot from the US thirty-one, uh, right of way, if that's excessive, we wanna reduce that, or maybe. Or maybe the conservation residential district, uh, saying that, you know, thirty five foot, uh, we're setback in that case is maybe a little bit excessive. We wanna do that, that's an option. Certainly, I could, if you all feel that, I could, I could take that next and put together something next month that shows those specific areas of the township and that might be, there might be uh, more non-conforming structures, that might be a little bit excessive, so you all can think about those specific areas, uh, in particular. Um, you know, I could put together a couple of visual examples where you have a, a building that exists and is, you know, out of conformity with the existing setbacks. And so maybe you all could, uh, the board could think about whether, uh, in that case, you might reduce the district standard by five or ten feet to make buildings fit better on the lot. I could put together a, I'd like to put together like visual example, uh, if I can find one, um, of a couple of places I can observe that like maybe fit that, um, and then there's also the option of the zoning administrator, like administrative approval. Um, that's another way forward, I could, uh, start assembling some material on the next time.
Okay.
I think you're just gonna put the zoning administrator on the spot with, given him this authority, whether it's Curtis or the next guy, or, you know. We've had three different zoning administrators in the last six years, so we're not even talking long.
Cheviny.
Time, you know, um, what you said this year could be decided next year by someone else. A little bit of leeway, I, I think you just set yourself for legal challenges.
Yeah, I think, we could leave that leeway with the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
But I think we, it would be nice if we could make it easier to add a leeway. If we have to give some direction to the zoning board of appeals, then we have that. But aren't those, aren't those steps that they have to go through, I don't know this, I'm not a lawyer. But the steps that are laid out for the zoning board of appeals, you have to, you have to meet these five, A, B, C, D, and E. Aren't those, are they set legislatively? I don't know. It, it, or, or is that just kind of common practice? Somebody must have made a rule on zoning board of appeals.
We're not there to give leeway, we're not there to give leeway to, to adoptive ordinances. They're, we're there to interpret them how they're written and see if.
Cause you kinda made that point in Lake Shore House, that all intents and purposes, it was okay, but how the, how it was written, you couldn't give that permission because how it was written.
Because they wanted to put the addition on, they had to have the addition.
Right. So there was no, there was no leeway, whether you thought it was okay or not, cause there was, the fact it was written, there's no way to get it.
The ZBA is not gonna give leeway. That's not the job.
So Richard, to your point then, they're gonna run into that same brick wall most of the time. Even this deck, I'm sorry, would, would, would be there. You chose to make it bigger. Can't, can't, a great can't for any. So the only way out of that is tear it down, don't rebuild it, adjust your setbacks so that now you've just made it fit. You've made the Christmas stocking a little bit bigger, so Junior can get more chocolate in it now Christmas time. Just sew it bigger, let's shorten the setbacks, so give more space for people to move, you know? I'm, I'm, honestly, I'm right here trying to figure out which, which way forward. You're either gonna, you're gonna either have to adjust the setbacks, the front setbacks a little bit, or do the, give some leeway to the zoning administrator. Or just force that person to go to the zoning board of appeals and have it denied. Either way, it does, it does come out pretty.
Okay, um, I think we need to think about this some more. I, I am in agreement with you David, I don't like that idea of giving. I, I like it to be black and white, otherwise we're just opening a can of worms. There has to be a consistent standard, um, so.
Can I ask one other question?
Of course.
When those standards were put in, when those setbacks were put in, it would be curious to know where those numbers came from. If I ever write a book, one of the chapters is gonna be, it's just a number. Because everything is just a number. Whether it's the speed on the highway, whether it's the weight on the road, whether it's the height of the bridge. Everything's a number set by somebody, including these setback numbers. Why thirty five feet on the back? I can understand, I can almost understand side setbacks more than back setbacks. But why thirty five feet? Need to be that? I don't know. Like in the case of where your road splits. I don't know. Why, why those numbers to begin with? So as we alluded to last time. They're not carved in stone, then it comes down from Mount Sinai at fifty, thirty five, and twenty, and ten, and et cetera. So is that something that you guys wanna look at and say, oh, maybe, given the fact that we're growing here and there's more happening and we need to have a little more flexibility, maybe these numbers are a little outdated. I think that's a legitimate thing to talk about. And you don't need fifty. You need it on the water, I get that. But the other numbers? It's just a number.
Okay. I can't answer that Curtis, good question. Let's table this for now and we'll give it some more thought. Think about it as you drive around. Look at places that are in our township and, um, the board did ask us to come back with some sort of recommendation, but I, at this point, for the life of me, couldn't tell you. Have a recommendation for them. I think we, we don't wanna eliminate setbacks, that decreases people's property values or safety issues with that, um, so we have to have some. But I, um, yeah, we'll table this for now. And I'll think, I'll, I'll think about it more. If you have thoughts, shoot us a, a group email, that would be helpful. To be continued. Um, Curtis, do you have anything as zoning administrator to report?
Just a little man division and a couple buildings, but that's nothing.
Okay. Okay, that concludes unfinished. Now we're on to new business and we have the Harris's here. Thank you for, uh, patiently sitting through all this. And, um, at this time, I would give you the floor. Um, I should say, did, there was an email, did everybody get the email from, okay. And David Donna.
Geez, you got it on the computer, I went to pictures. I'm gonna start with some history. I, I've grown, I think I'm the oldest one here. And that's that, there's been a lot of dangers through the years in our township. And I've been on a lot of boards and I've seen where common sense doesn't play a factor anymore to, like, it's just, anyway. So back to history. We purchased this piece of property down on Rushton Road from a tax sale. It was all by the wayside. All the boards that I've ever sat on, there's always a shortage of housing, shortage of halls, places for people to live. I wanted to do my part, I resurrected this, this crap house. I put a lot of money into it. It went from zero taxes basically to now a non-homestead and it's, the valuation's over four hundred thousand dollars. Alright. I started the project, I could go back to history, and I, I nicknamed this house, the Waffle House, because the waffles lived there. I went to school with the kids, Peggy and Leo, Waffle, lived there and raised the family. Leo owned the bar. And Peggy ran Peggy's pottery room. And there was upwards of twenty people on any given night that she was teaching ceramics and painting. Anyway, it went by the wayside, he passed away, she couldn't do it anymore. The house sat there and, and you've seen the pictures of the beginning, you couldn't even see it from the road, it was just growed up to shrubs. It was vandalized, it was half a crack house, there was beer bottles through hollow corridors, it was a mess. Anyway, I resurrected the residential side where they lived immediately. And it, I went through all the permits and it is compliant to twenty-three code specs. And with that in mind, I just wonder, I got a occupancy permit, I wonder how many houses in this community have occupancy permits? It is pretty low percentage, you all gotta agree with that. Some of them probably live in homes that aren't up to date. Well, I don't, there's a lot of them that aren't up to date, but, anyway, um, the county and I worked together with the permits and I had a single family dwelling, okay? And I was told I could have a mother-in-law apartment. And now we learned later that if I lived there, and I didn't read that in the beginning, but anyway, I had two families living there, the mother-in-law at one end and the, you know, kids on the other end. Well, with changing jobs, I lost both of those renters. And now here we are, it's called a duplex. And we can't have duplexes in things, don't you? Where do we go from here? I obviously'm gonna have to evict somebody if you come to that, or I'd like to see us come up with another way of making this work. And I don't know how to do it, I don't know where to begin. I mean, everybody knows there's a shortage of housing. I thought I was doing my part. We got, we got burnt, so. Did I say too much?
I don't know. Um, I wrote in the letter that I sent you some options, um, upon reviewing the ordinance, um. And just backing up a little bit, we did not get a zoning permit. Um, we did not need a zoning permit. It was already a residence, we were doing a remodel, so building permits were obtained, but a zoning permit for, was not required. And like Dave said, he worked with the building department and they approved it as, as the mother-in-law apartment. But, um, I guess I got a, a couple of pictures here and this won't take long, but I don't know if everybody can see them. I sent you some of the outside pictures. Um, this was, this was the back of the house, all overgrown. And it gets worse. Um, this is one of the inside pictures, you can see the vandalism that took place there. And this was Peggy's goodbye for her pottery shop. Um, this was one of the many loads of junk that we removed. It was, it was just horrible.
It was fourteen years empty.
They had taken out a, something out of the refrigerator, the shelf out of the refrigerator and threw it through the glass door of the oven. So there was glass all over the floor. I mean, it was, it was a total eyesore inside and out. And just, I mean, I was, I walked in there first time and I said, this is a bulldozer job, it was that bad. Um, so then we, I'll just see if I can get back there, I'm upside down, so I can't really. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the site.
I, yes, I'm, I'm here, yeah.
You been out there?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, this other one. And we have some after pictures, what it looks like now. The way this place was set up, it had, it had two garage stalls that ended up being in the middle. And if we were looking, this is the direction we'd be, the house was here, it was built in the sixties. Um, has some of the same stonework as the bar. And, um, then there were two garage stalls. And then they added on and put Peggy's, Peggy's, uh, studio in there. There we go. This is, this is the south end of the, of the house now, um, where her studio was. Another picture of the south end. It's just a nice cozy little two-bedroom. This one is in the north end, it's a three-bedroom, uh, part with a bath and a half. And, oh, that's back to the south end. But it's all clean and neat and fixed up, this is a fireplace that was existing, we pulled that up. So we've got a very comfortable home for four adults right now, there's the outside. We have four adults who are all working and we have five children who are all attending local schools that, um, are now living there. And so I guess we would like to, you know, what the board thinks, um, as far as can we, can we make an amendment to the ordinance? Can we, um, add a duplex as a potential use? Um, do we have to go to the, uh, ZBA, get a variance? I mean, if that's the way the board wants us to handle it, we'll do that. Um, but we're just, we're here to get, answer your questions and what would work well for, for this parcel. I mean, it certainly would be a shame to evict some of these people. They were looking desperately for a homeless woman and so that's what we have. So, any questions?
Um, Donna, I do have a question. It's no doubt that you took an eyesore and made a value add for the community.
I understand.
No, no question. And it doesn't fit the standards of, um, CR, you know, the home in CR, in conservation recreation. I will be better able to answer this, or, or I would guess I would ask you, cause you, you're more familiar with this. You say in number five, um, put number five. Um, we seek guidance on making the property comply with zoning laws, including possible ordinance amendments to better fit twenty twenty-five needs. There are many instances where the ordinance was amended to allow for a use before and after the fact. Um, I, help me understand, how could I find out the history of how they, cause you, I think you're proposing that we add it as a permitted use in CR? Is that correct?
That's, that's what I'm, I feel would be the cleanest way to correct the situation. Well, one of the, the before and after the fact, you were talking about that now. We're gonna change the setbacks so that this guy's compliant, okay? So we're, we're changing the rules, yes, in the middle of the game. And I, I agree, this should have been done long ago. There were no favors granted, there were no favors requested of our zoning administrator. Um, and, and, uh, yes, we should have come to you before.
Understood, but what, help me, when you say, there, when you say there are many instances where the ordinance was amended to allow for a use before and after. Um, what's kind of history is there in Banks Township doing that? Do you, where would I go to find the instances where we amended an ordinance to allow a permitted use?
To allow a permitted use?
Isn't that what you're proposing?
Well, and, and it would be, should be in the minutes from the planning commission and also in the, um, minutes of the township board.
Okay, so I would have to sort through minutes of the township board, boards?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of, of instances where, and I can't right now, but, um.
Okay, that's okay, I'm putting you on the spot. It's gonna be helpful for me to understand the history of that, how, how. I think that the board is reasonable and they wanna work with people. If you could give us some sort of sense of the history of allowing these sort of permitted uses cha- you know, changing the ordinance to.
And I would, I guess I would start by going back through planning commission to see where there were ordinance amendments that were, that did take place and the history of those, um. There's, there's two great big three-inch binders with minutes. At least there was when I left office.
Okay, so ord- start with ordinance amendments, correct?
That's where, that's where I would start, yes. And I guess also Patty, when you look back to when the ordinance was revamped several times in the last forty years, it has been revamped. Um, things did change. Because they would look at the, the master plan to determine. Things did change, because they would look at the, the master plan to determine what the master plan guidelines were. And then they would look at what really isn't fitting and how can we amend to make these things less non-compliant, you know? And, and so I, I just, I remember sitting through some of the planning commission meetings where certain instances were discussed. And then the language or the, the zone may have been modified, the boundaries of the zone, to make things fit better. You know, there, there's, there's a lot of people that you, we can talk to, that, that were sitting here for the planning commission meetings. I came to some, but not all of them.
Sure.
And they would be able to maybe identify more specific situations than I would right at this point.
Okay, well, that's a start for me, understanding that history is gonna help me make any decisions going forward. And where are you in CR? How far are you away from the next zone, if you will?
Well.
Can you help?
Ooh, this is not a very good map, that's not, that's your, it's your land, you need a zoning map. You need a zoning map, that's not a.
It's on, it's CR, it's on the left.
I, I know it is, I'm wondering how, where in depth of.
Both sides of the road, it's the CR. How far do you have to go?
North or south?
Till you find the next.
I think CR goes all the way down to the, to the township line. I'm not sure how east, east it goes, it's a tag behind there, but I'm not sure how it backs. That's like.
How big is the parcel there? Acre and a half.
We can have them in residential and village, even though I'm, or not at all.
Not allowed anywhere, anywhere.
When I read through there, did I say you can have them either?
I'm not really in on that here, I'm sorry. Let's look at it on the phone, I, I had it up here a minute ago.
Well, that's one question I have, what questions do you guys have of the Harrises?
Well, again, my, I did go through the planning commission in previous minutes and I guess, I agree with what you said. Need more housing, need, need to make it easier for people to put houses up, get housing. My issue is on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, I got the minutes here that it was from, it's from Anita. That you went to the planning commission, requested, all, you know. Is there a special use permit to allow as described, a duplex, two-family dwelling in CR area after submitted application? For special use permit duplex, the zoning administrator, chairman, if you're not allowed in a CR zone by special use or otherwise. The applicant was so informed, he was requested to meet with myself and zoning administrator, chairman, if there was an appropriate use, special or otherwise, that would be applicable, applicable. And I'm waiting the applicant's follow-up contact, if you posted, and there was no other follow-up contact from that. So I, I guess I look at this as ask for forgiveness instead of permission. Because it was, it was brought to the planning commission, I got told no.
There's Sinclair Road, there's a parcel north of Sinclair, so we're kind of right now. There's a parcel at CR behind us, north of us, and south of us, and across the road.
Okay, thank you.
What happened from twenty-twenty-two until now? The conversation?
What do you mean?
In those minutes, you were informed by the previous planning commission that it was not to be, it was not gonna be allowed in CR, but there was gonna be further conversation on it. What happened from twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two until this point now?
It was an allowed use for a single-family dwelling with a mother-in-law apartment.
But you didn't live there?
If you were living there.
Yeah, you have to live there.
Well.
We just learned that like six weeks ago, if you lived there, if it wasn't. I didn't think I had to live there in order to have a mother-in-law apartment.
Well, I think this is a great example of zoning. Being a real complex thing that can be very difficult to live with and.
Well, I think that's a great example of how zoning can change. And, and Tyler and I will tell you that there's no affordable housing, no matter how you slice it. And if changing a lot of the uses for duplexes or such buildings and all this good brings residents to our house or our community. I think we should promote that.
And I, and I don't disagree with that, but when you got, you asked for it, you got told no, you did it anyway.
Regardless of that.
Right, but you know, again, going through the paperwork and stuff, you know, there, we've taken people to court on incidents like that, we find them. And you just change, you know, again, I look at this as we're asking for forgiveness instead of permission, because we got told no.
We're not changing it for the Harrises.
But that's what they're asking.
We're changing it because we need housing. They said everyone knows we need housing, there's plenty of houses out there.
From the zoning administration.
We've got plenty of houses that are big. And ag, that could probably be split up. How does, how does, how does it work with, like, like the migrant housing, I guess it'll be different, but there's multiple families living in, and that's allowed.
I think CR makes it problematic, if you change it and put duplex housing in, in CR.
Do you think the developers are gonna come and start building houses?
No, I think people that have properties on the lake are gonna start dropping duplexes in on their properties. And I think, if you wanna talk about bringing something to the public for a public hearing, I think that one you probably should. Because there might be a whole lot of people that have lakefront property that really don't want a second, a second residence or a duplex on, on next door to them. Gosh, a couple of problems we've had with some things just for camping. You know, so I'm just saying, CR, I, I understand what you're saying, Dave.
Yep.
And then ag and, and, and whatever, it's already a lot of an R1, but CR, I think is a different animal.
Well, Curtis, in, in looking at the map though, for CR does extend on the east side of Rushton Road. Just for, I don't know, is that a, is that a half a mile or a mile or something there? And, and that's not the typical configuration either.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, obviously I didn't draw the map.
No, I don't, I wasn't a part of drawing that map either.
There's a reason that was included, and so that's a whole nother step, if you wanna.
And well, the only thing I can think of, that it might be because there's so many small parcels in there, that they selected it to be CR rather than ag, I don't know.
All right, what would you like?
The request was for Travis, a, a special use permit, and it didn't meet the criteria for a special use permit. This is different, we're asking for a zoning amendment that would allow it. And, you know, I mean, that's.
That's how we discussed RVs. That's how we discussed RVs, this is how this stuff comes up.
Well, that, there you go, the RV zoning, there's a perfect example of changing the ordinance after, after things happen too. And that, that was one of the.
Yeah. Donna, you're suggesting the cleanest way would be to add the duplex in CR as a permitted use, so changing the amendment for that. Your other options for us were to, what, go before the zoning board?
The ZBA.
The ZBA, excuse me.
Well, or, or if, if it was made into, if it was rezoned as ag, it might make sense, but it wouldn't, I mean, it's still, ag is not, it does not allow duplexes either.
Okay, so that's not a good option.
And why not?
Because that'd be a double, that'd be a double amendment that you'd have to make, yeah.
So noted.
There should be more duplexes allowed in our community. And there are some that exist, that aren't where they're supposed to be.
There are some that exist?
I'm in agreement with Curtis, if you do allow two-family duplexes in CR land, we're probably gonna have quite a few angry homeowners. When we do a public hearing, that we're gonna hear a lot of it about. And if that's what we want, want to see, I mean, that, that is an option, but. It would likely upset a lot of individuals who have a home on the lake and now they have the opportunity to be able to see going up and down duplexes. Because we, we passed that.
I agree with that, I, I understand.
And unfortunately, and I, I say this wholeheartedly, I genuinely, I feel bad that it's in CR land, but unfortunately, that's where it is. And there's really no good option at this point.
If it's a lot of use in a special use permit, that would be specific.
Right.
To the situation, it wouldn't necessarily allow everyone to put a duplex on your lakefront property without due cause and.
And that could be something.
In a private board that says.
But that could also be an exclusion to a special use permit, that it would not, not be waterfront parcel. I don't know, because that, you would add that under the special exceptions on the second layer.
The permitted use?
Not the permitted use, but as the, allowed with the special.
Allowed by special use permit.
Correct, with a special use permit. That, then that would require an applicant to come to this board to have things approved. And you can also split, put specific restrictions and regulations on a parcel. You know, where you don't build it into the ordinance, but you then decide based on the parcel and the neighborhood and the road right of way and all that sort of thing, if it fits. It, it didn't, it doesn't fit with the existing ordinance as a special use permit.
Okay, so is that, is that something you would be, have an appetite for, to ask them to have uses subject to special approval, special use permit? And then we would have to change the ordinance, help me out here Curtis?
You'd have to get it added to your exceptions or your, your allowed by special use permit, you'd have to have, have that listed. As one in there, and yes, and she's right, you'd have to go through the special use permit process. But if they meet all the standards, you're, you're not gonna, I don't, I don't think you could say yes to you and no to you. They meet the standards, you have to allow. I mean, if you meet all what's there, I guess what I'm hearing is that you would say preemptively, you'd say, okay, well, not in this section right here, we're not gonna allow it ever. But these other ones, we, we will allow it. You're gonna, you would have to state that ahead of time, otherwise if it's in there and they meet the criteria, you know, you can't say no. You can't say I don't feel like it right now.
I also think it's a very slippery slope to say, okay, well, it's non-waterfront land in CR-zoned areas, I mean, that's, that's as closely related to spot zoning. And maybe I'm wrong in the, the direct definition of that, but that, to me, is, is equally of a slippery slope.
Yeah, you don't wanna get yourself on, on the backside of that, where they lost you.
Right, it has to be different, so. Ruben, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think some of what's mentioned about allowing duplexes in CR. But then creating some kind of exception or exclusion for lakefront residential areas, that's, it's an option certainly. It's, Banks Township does, the zoning does appear unique, that there isn't a separate lakefront zone. And that CR, it is unique to a lot of communities that we see or compared to, I guess, other communities that we see where there is CR. That includes both lakefront areas and non-lakefront areas. So it would be an option that you all could think about. I might also encourage you to think about the goals and objectives in the master plan. That's the one that's adopted and the one that's, you know, under consideration now, there really is a lot of. In, 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 some of the survey results that you had this time around that highlight, I think, how important housing really is as an issue. And I'm looking here right now, as far as the goals and objectives of the plan, there is, in the graph, it says, explore opportunities to amend the zoning ordinance. To allow more affordable housing options and diverse housing formats. So to me, that's something to take into consideration, that's right in the master plan, that's kind of a, a guiding. That's really sort of the foundation for your zoning decisions here. Something to take into consideration. It does, the plan does also state that CR should continue to be the lowest density residential district in the township as well. So those are all things, I think, to kind of consider in weighing, like whether a special use permit. Allowing duplexes as a special use permit would be appropriate here. So, yeah, just some of that policy foundation, does that make sense?
Yes, so in that vein, yours, may, what you're, what I think I hear you saying is to encourage us to think about amending our ordinance in CR. With, you know, with specific criteria to non-lakefront property, is that what I'm hearing you say?
That could, that could be an option.
Or am I, are you, did you say more than that that I didn't?
No, I think that's, that's, that's an option.
Okay.
I don't think you necessarily said that, but I think.
The master plan sets that as a goal, being, making housing more accessible. So I think, I tend to think like David, I, I think we should make him. Whether it's gotta be through a special use application or something or not, that might be okay. But I think we should make duplexes and these types of creative housing things permitted in probably everywhere.
And not just CR.
Well, yeah, if we're gonna do it in CR, then there's other places that would be a bit easier to do it, on Lake Morson's, I think. Ag, you know, lots of, most of the land is ag, big open spaces.
Patty, can I just say one thing? We didn't buy this with the thought of making it a duplex, we really didn't. But when we dug into it, we got the one end of the house done and rented, okay, now what are we gonna do with this other end, which is a terrible eyesore? I mean, we took the new, the roof off and, and turned it a different direction to make it more aesthetically pleasing. But we still had these two stalls of a garage right in the middle of it. And so it was, it was calling to us that this, that's what it really is. There is a connector hallway in the back, which made it, you know, possible. But a five-bedroom home is a little, little much for that small lot too, so.
Did you have drawings for that when you redid the roof structure?
Yeah, he, he got all the permits and everything for that.
Okay.
But the roof was in horrible shape, there were, there were different levels of floor, and so he had to tear that out and, and get it all. It still has one step up to the main living area from the bedrooms area and the dining room. But, you know, we, we made it as accessible as possible, it's not handicap accessible, but, you know, just did everything we could to make it a, a safe home. But yeah, drawings and.
I guess the reason I ask that, maybe you can. I guess the reason I ask that, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. But whenever we've done it in the past where we have to take a roof off or we're changing necessarily the height of something, because that's probably likely what happened based on the pictures of what I saw. And maybe I'm wrong, I saw a single pitch on one, but then you had a gable that goes on top. We have always gone to the township to make sure that we are not going above or we're complying with township reasons. And I'm not trying to add another complexity into it, but-
I'm not understanding how that would affect the town, the township would-
The building permit.
Yes, and then-
The drawings, I had to submit drawings and they were all approved.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't understand where the township would be involved in a, in a roof change.
Well, if, you're, you're now, you're changing and in essence, you are changing the overall aesthetic and look of a home. And maybe I'm going down a hole where I'm completely wrong. Someone, please tell me if I am. But it, now you're going up, right? You're changing the height of your, you were changing the height of a home.
It was a flat roof. I just put a peak roof on it sideways. Trust me.
I understand that, but that changed the height of the home.
Yeah, it was less than thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Yeah, in that case, it would have been within the township standards had you been trying to comply with a zoning permit for the township, but, but you weren't at that point. You were at the county level. So we weren't involved with it until we talked about it.
Okay, and that was my question. That was all-
At which point it was, you know, we'd already discussed whether it could. I mean, we had an extra meeting and talked about whether it could be under a planned unit development type thing, but there's, the road accesses weren't right. So that's why that didn't, that wasn't allowed. So it was my understanding at that point going forward that it was just going to be a single family. You're, and at that point, I'm out of it, you know, I don't have anything, county's not coming to me or, or anything, so, you know.
Other questions you have of the Harrises at this time? While they're here?
Um, I'm of the mind that we would amend our ordinance for non-waterfront properties in our township to allow for duplexes. Yeah, is there, is there other contingencies you'd like to see?
Why, why would it be for non-waterfront though?
Because I think to Tyler's point, when you have not, when you have waterfront property and you have duplexes, the neighbors probably would have a lot to say about that.
But are you picking favorites?
Right, that's what I mean. If, I got a lakefront house, so I don't have to have neighbors, but
Sorry, you're not fair with Greenbelt, so I could complain about that.
Well, again, I don't think it's because they're not allowed that you don't see duplexes in Banks Township. It's just, if we allowed them, you're not gonna see a swell of people coming in and building duplexes.
No, it's their kind of work to go in.
And as any kind of developer that would come in, they're gonna go into a village area over a CR or ag because of the benefits of what it might, you know, a sewer system that doesn't exist or, yeah.
But are you gonna see current homes getting changed into duplexes because now I can turn two people on instead of one?
Potentially, but how many, how many are out there already that we haven't opened?
Right, then what's it there? If it's, if the house will accommodate it and it gets more people housing.
But I'm saying if we allow it, then you could allow not, where you pick and choose who can do it and where it can do it. It's either allowed or it's not.
Well, again, I'll go back to your, to, why was it allowed in, in R1 and, and Village?
Right.
Nowhere else. Obviously, at that time, they thought that it should be confined to those areas. I don't know, the thinking I was in there.
So is that way now? I mean, we could add more residences and leave out lakefront, but I don't know if we should do that either.
But, you know, going through, when I went through different, there was other people that asked stuff to get rezoned for different reasons. It wasn't allowed because of whether that, can't do it, did it zone this way, so.
Right, right. I've had, I've had residents come to me and say, you can approve this because they knew better and they did it. And Matt Harris got in big trouble for that. But I, in spite of the fact that I've been told that, I, I think this is an example, we need to make this work. They've done a great thing for the, they've enhanced that property beautifully. And plus, it should be their right to do it. And that's why I think we should need to open it up. If we're gonna make zoning work, continue to work, it's gotta change and be flexible with the times. I think a lot of us are agreeing with that. There's a lot of sentiment to get rid of it entirely. And if we can't do stuff like this, then, then I think we're gonna be facing getting rid of it entirely.
Well-
As, that's gonna be a fight at least. I don't know how it's gonna go down, but it's gonna happen pretty soon, I think.
And I guess that, that's my take on it. I would be up for it, but I guess my issue is having this, that it was requested, it got denied, and it got done anyway. So why have zoning if nobody's gonna follow it?
Point taken.
It makes it difficult, it makes it difficult to be on, be on enforcement side of it. If, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do that, it makes it tough. Where do I go from here? Are you gonna move ahead on this? Because what we gave, what I, what I promised Dave and Donna is that I would hold off on the citation until they could come to this meeting and discuss it. Are you moving forward with that, that whereby I should hold off?
I would propose that you hold off. I feel like we should, I would like to see us amend our ordinance to allow for duplexes.
Has anybody moved that, made that motion?
I would entertain a motion if it was like a-
But I will make that, I'd make that motion.
So we have-
My motion is help, I'm gonna vote for that, help it, that we amend the ordinance as necessary to allow multi-unit housing.
Multi or duplex?
I'm not just saying duplex, multi-unit housing in all zones.
That's not the process.
Do you wanna correct or?
You're not sure if you'd go that far.
Yeah, you wanna tweak that?
That's not the motion that I-
Or I get to Curtis's point.
So we have a motion, we gotta finish this, and we'll follow up with the opportunity.
Can we start with duplexes? And move to, to keep your motion to move towards, how about just any housing, creative housing per our master plan directions? Be it duplex or multi-housing or townhouses or whatever else is an option for take your last one to me.
In all districts?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, Cindy, can you read that back? I want everybody to know what they're reading on.
Right now, what I have is amend the ordinance as necessary, allow, and I've got a blank here. It says multi-unit, but I cross that out. Housing in all zones or districts.
Wait, say that again. Wait, wait, should we start with the, what ordinance are we talking about? Is all-
Permitted uses.
All permitted uses.
Or are you talking a special use permit? You should define that, if you're gonna amend the ordinance, which slot you're putting in.
Yeah.
Richard seems to be in favor of just making it a permitted use.
A permitted use for all districts.
Right, Richard, that's what I'm reading, yeah. So that's, I mean, that's what your motion is right now.
Okay, Cindy, read that back one more time.
Okay, amend the permitted use ordinance as necessary to allow multi-unit housing in all zones slash districts. I, did I get the right word for that? I think it's districts.
Of districts. When public comment comes up, tell me.
Zoning district?
Yeah, they have to get Ruben to give them the language. Then they have to go to send it across the board.
Okay, so in terms of process, any further discussion?
They're at the public hearing, they can't do any of this.
Are we gonna leave it at multi-unit? How do you feel about that, guys?
Well, anybody want to second it?
Well, your first motion's gotta fail first before we can second it, the new motion.
Okay, so back up the train.
I second his first motion.
Which he said multi-
Even though it changed mid-straight, so let's go through and vote that down, and then you can make your new motion.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion that said all permitted use of multi-unit dwellings? Am I giving this right? Help me out here.
Amendment to, amend the ordinance, amend the permitted use ordinance as necessary to allow multi-unit housing in all zoning districts.
Okay, so we need to take a vote on that. And just so I'm clear, you wanna tweak that.
Well, that has, that has been seconded yet.
No, I wouldn't want to, we need to, we vote on that, we all go second it.
Dave?
Can I help you with wording?
Oh, I thought, I thought you seconded it.
I, I, I would second that.
Yep, he did.
Can I help you with the wording on that?
Not yet. We have to make, we have to vote on what we have currently.
The, the word of your, your motion.
Or he can withdraw. He can withdraw his motion.
You're asking, you're asking to amend zoning, amend the zoning ordinance to allow as a permitted use multi-family or whatever your word's gonna be in any zoning district. That's, that's a little clearer.
Is that what you really meant to say?
Yes, yeah, that is what I meant to say.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I will second that.
Yeah, I know, I know that's reluctant because you don't like our process. It's a little messy here.
Well, he'd like to stay with duplexes for now.
They'll abide and they'll walk up with the process.
All in favor, say a.
I think you have to have discussion.
Oh, excuse me. Further discussion?
This is with you guys, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that.
I don't, they cannot, they don't have it.
Uh, if, if there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote. So all in favor of that motion, Cindy, read it one more time.
Say it, Curtis. Amend the zoning ordinance.
Motion to amend the zoning ordinance to allow as a permitted use allow duplex, if whatever, you can put duplex in there.
Duplex, multi-family, multi-
As a permitted use in any zoning district.
Yeah, and it, and it says duplex, it's multi-
Multi-family.
Multi, multi-unit, whatever.
Multi, as a permitted use in any zoning-
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion varies. I would vote in favor of that as well.
Great.
Um, not a lot.
They can't do any of that.
No, please do neither.
They can't do any of it. This is not the township, this is the planning commission, they might understand this.
Out for public hearing.
Sure. Our next step, okay, next meeting, we'll have, would you help create that ordinance?
Yes, yeah.
The amendment to the ordinance, okay. Wow, that was messy. I'm spare with me, sorry about that. Okay, that's, that's all I have on the agenda, and now for public comments.
Me. I would like to say that this is not the township board, so that is not the process for an amendment change. The process for an amendment change is you guys discuss it, you start thinking how you want it to be worded, you let Ruben know. Ruben puts it together in a format, then you guys come to a meeting and you approve of what's in front of you, the document, to send it to the township board and to send it to the county planning commission. And then, and a public hearing. Then, yes, then, after all that, the township board does what you guys just done.
Correct.
You cannot-
We are not legislative.
Right, but you just made a motion that you, that, to anybody listening to this, when they hear this video, will leave here thinking, oh, I can do this now because they just made that. Then they go call their contractor and their contractor does a, says, okay, let's do a duplex. And then the person who doesn't come to these meetings finds out six months later that it might not have went through. Then you have a lawsuit. This is not the process.
Thank you, Julie, that, thank you for that correction. This is true. We are not legislative. We would, what, what our role is, is to make a recommendation to the board. And what the board does with it, that's theirs. They have to do their own. We are only making a recommendation.
But that was not the motion, was not a recommendation.
You're correct. You're correct. Uh, there are public comments.
Um, chickens. Chickens are an example of something that was happening. And so after the fact, the planning commission, Mark, I think you were at the time, changed the zoning ordinance to allow chickens. Because people were keeping small poultry and small animals and it was not allowed in the zone. So that's another example of something that was changed after people were already doing it. And I really admire the fact that you are willing to explore dual-family, multi-family dwelling. I went through the ordinance and when I read the definition of what a dual-family dwelling is, there are a lot of these in the township already. There are a lot of converted basement apartments. They're in, they're in CR. They're all over there. I don't, I don't think zoning is meant to be a tool by which we go door-to-door knocking, asking people who lives here. It's not a tool to get revenge. Zoning is to control the growth in the community. Zoning is to protect property values. And I, but I think you're on the right track. I really think the planning commission's on the right track in entertaining it because we do allow dual-family in the village and in the one, so I just thank you for entertaining the motion and starting the process to allow for the dual-family dwellings because again, they're all over this township. They're all over the township.
Thank you, Katie. Donna?
Comment on the setbacks along US 31. There is a section of 31 that is a hundred foot setback, or a hundred foot, foot right of way. But there is a part of that that is not. And I, I don't recall exactly where it is, but I encourage you to check with MDOT to get that information. I believe it's the south part of 31 near Eastport, that it might be sixty-six, it might be seventy-five foot right of way. I, I don't remember those details, but that did come up probably thirty-five years ago. As far as setbacks, I would also encourage you to check with the zoning ordinances of the neighboring townships to kind of compare what they have for setbacks. There, you know, these aren't really arbitrary numbers. They were set based on some research of what the surrounding neighbors are doing. On the sand and gravel ordinance that is currently in place, that is not on the zoning ordinance, it's on the website. It has apparently, well, Ruben is newly returned to you as a consultant, but I don't think the ordinance ever got updated after that was approved in November.
I think, my awareness, there is that version posted under ordinances.
But, but not woven into the ord, the zoning ordinance document itself?
I believe there's two ordinances on the ordinance page under, there's a subheading called ordinances, and there's one that was adopted. And there's a full zoning ordinance that was updated per the adoption in November last year. So it says, it has the date December twentieth, twenty twenty-four. But there's also an older zoning ordinance under lane use and zoning that does not have that.
Then I, I missed it, I'm sorry about that. But I would also like to say that the ordinance that was adopted was greatly researched. I don't know how many months we worked on that, millions of- we worked on that in millions of meetings, but the legalese does have a purpose, and any of these aggregate companies that come in, they've got attorneys looking at it, they're, it, legalese is nothing to be afraid of. I mean, it, it's very specific, and the courts, um, have tested the ordinance that we now have, it has been tested in Metamora Township. So, um, it's not, it wasn't an arbitrary ordinance, just to confuse the people, so, that's it, thank you.
So, uh, I think it's important, the planning commission knows that they have an option to recommend not to make changes to the setbacks. You don't have to make any changes. Just, it seems, everyone seems, you feel like you have to make a change, and you don't, so you can recommend no changes. Um, I'd also like to thank Ruben for his expertise, sound approach and recommendations, and as a resident, Ruben, I'm very grateful for your guidance. Thank you very much. Yes. Thank you, Nancy. Mark?
Yeah, um, wanted to, uh, address a little bit on setbacks again. Um, I, I think it's a very unwise idea to give a zoning administrator or anybody discretion, if you're gonna give them discretion of five feet, just change your setback five feet, so he doesn't have to deal with it, because you always have personal privilege, preferences, uh, you know, and it, it's always gonna come back to bite you. The ordinance needs to be very specific, and if it works up to this many feet, but after that, it doesn't, you know, doesn't comply. Uh, I think, I think, uh, meaning their, uh, flexibility is not, it, there's, there's tools you can use, I mean, one that comes to mind is you could have setbacks uh, set at posted speed limits, so you need fifty feet, whereas a fifty-five speed limit, whereas a twenty-five is speed limit, you want to need twenty feet, or wha- whatever the number may be. But that would be one way to differentiate setbacks in different districts, in different areas. And as, as Julie said too, uh, your, your motion needs to be, I, I move that, we ha- we ask Ruben, or the planning consultant, to write language for X, Y, Z. Then you make that language back, you deliberate, a- and then, um, if you still approve that language, then you hold a public hearing. Public hearing must be held by the planning commission, and then, after the public hearing, you take all that information in, you go over the language again, is this what we want, or do we wanna make some changes? And each time you make changes, you go, if they're not, if they're significant, you involve the consultant, and say, make these changes for us, and then we'll deliberate again, and then when it finally is in the form where you like it, then you, then you pass it to advise to the township board, actually, you go first to the county, county planning commission has to review it before it goes to the township board.
Mm-hmm.
And then township board has to make the decision. So it's, it's a long process, and you're right, as stated, you're an advisory body, not, not an decision-making body.
Thank you, Mark.
So.
Well, can, can we fix that problem here by, um, if we made an illegitimate motion that passed it?
Uh-huh.
You can't really do, nobody can act on it, since it has to go through this process anyway, but I'd like to clean it up and fix it if we could.
I think it's kinda implied that, I mean, like, it wasn't specifically said that, everybody knew that, that's who we kicked it up to, is
Yeah.
we kicked it up, the landlord, not making policy here, we're kicking it up to the, to the do.
The motion, correct.
Well, yeah, but I, I didn't, actually, I think it slipped by all of us, so I'd like to fix it and just modify the, I just can't have any motion, but I'd like the motion to state the same goal, but say that we wanna start the process uh, appropriately by having Ruben work on language for the next month.
And then he would be expected to take that language back the next month, last month, he didn't say language, the setbacks, you asked him to eliminate setbacks on the road side, and, and bring that language back to you, and he brought no language back, he brought some rationale, some reasons, but he did not follow the directive of, the proper direction of the board to ask him to write language, bring it back to you, and then you would have had the same, similar deliberation you had tonight, which is fine, but it was his job to bring you that language so that you could see it and then talk about it.
Uh, I don't know, Mark, but I-
We talked about that last month, yeah.
I know, but I looked, I looked at the motion specifically, and, um, you know, I withdrew the first motion, and then moved that we ask Beck and Ray to start the process to amend the ordinance, to eliminate setbacks that exceed all the rights of way and setbacks, so I think maybe in the end, um, he did that. I, so, I hate to disagree with you, but I think, I don't think-
Well, he should, he should have wrote your language that you could-
Yes.
Well, we didn't ask, we didn't specifically put asking for that, we can ask him to start the process, so, anyway.
Um, so, help me out in process, you want to re, you would like to make a motion in order, you, to revise your motion.
Right.
To rescind it and give a new, that, resume.
I'd like to rescind, actually, we did the same thing last month, because we, we don't know, I don't know what I'm doing, okay, I'm sorry.
We did, cause I don't know what to do.
I'm doing this, thank you for all your grace, and I appreciate the, those that you know, Mark, to help us out.
Yes. You take the extra toll.
Thanks, so I'd like to rescind that motion.
If they all vote to do.
And make a new motion.
So I need a, I need a second for him to rescind that motion. Travis is seconding that. All in favor of rescinding that original motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Okay.
Now my new motion is
Wait, I need to look at.
You can use the same wording, but we're, uh,
Beginning the process.
Beginning the process.
They all need training.
To, uh, add multi-unit dwellings in all zoning district, districts, beginning the process.
You're asking him to bring in wording.
Okay, that's, okay, asking, uh, Ruben, remember, to bring this wording next month to affect that change, start the process.
I hear the spirit of what you're saying, is that technically correct enough?
I'd, I'd like public comment to see, what are you hoping?
You're in public comments, you're not in the board meeting, and, or the meeting anymore, you've, you've moved to public comment.
It has not adjourned.
I know, it hasn't adjourned, but
We didn't.
It's just, it's difficult for the person doing minutes, I feel bad for her.
Okay, yes, I'm, so I'm coming back with public comment to new business, where Richard has made a motion to rescind the original, we all voted to rescind that, or that motion carry, and a new motion is being, rescinds with a new motion to begin the process of having our planning consultant develop an, uh, uh, amend our, or our current ordinance to bring new wording to amend the zoning ordinance.
There you go, yeah. And just, to amend the ordinance to allow multi family dwellings in all
Districts.
Districts.
As a permitted use.
Thank you.
It's a teamwork, teamwork effort here. Is there a second to Richard's motion?
I'll second it, yeah.
All in favor?
I for the, aye.
Oh, excuse me, for the discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? All right, um, Cindy, do you wanna read that back, or just somewhere unclear?
Mm-hmm. Uh, motion made in cycle D, by, uh, Richard Truski and
Travis.
Travis Ellis, to begin the process to have, uh, Ruben, Shao, the planning consultant, to bring new wording to amend the zoning ordinance to allow multi-family dwellings as a permitted use in all zoning districts.
Perfect.
Okay. And that's what we will, okay.
Motion carried.
Motion carried, all right. All right, um, do any, I'll, I'll give you one more option, any further public comment?
Um, a personal point that I, I need to get around tomorrow to advertise a house for rent, so, you know, somebody needs a place to live.
Is that a signal that all the townspeople?
Julie, I strongly suggest that members of the planning commission seek training.
Thank you, point, great point, well taken.
I would just like to, I, I'm not able to find the up-to-date ordinance on the website, um, and if that is indeed, if it is here somewhere, somebody could point me to it, but let's get the one that's gone off the website. The twenty-two, uh, the twenty-twenty-two one, right there.
There is a process to read the website currently.
Any further public comment?
Just remind me before, are you, are you still working on changing setbacks?
Under-
Then they shouldn't have the other one.
You're right.
I mean, it's confusing.
It's confusing, yes, the day is long.
It is, there's a, but see, it's got a different name, I'll see you for that.
Same thing with the FOIA policy. There's two FOIA policies on there, the old one and the new one.
Not now, we got a one.
Okay.
It would be nice if you could.
Okay, so it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I gotta, I'm gonna see if mine pops up.
All right, do I have a motion during the meeting?
I will print one.
All right, all in favor of reading the adjourned?
Yeah, thank you. I just printed it.